As a mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this town council regular meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First, in Jesus's name, I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We'd like to recommend moving item 9A, the trash trap installation, up to item 4B under administrative items, as well as we would like to add item 3D, 2025 council meeting schedule revision. And last but not least, we'd like to continue the public hearing, item 6D, 2024, 27 CZM, immediately church townhomes. We will need action of the board to continue that to the March 17th meeting. Those are the only adjustments.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
American, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, is the Clayton For You.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, we have the pleasure to bring you another episode of Clayton For You. Tonight's episode is on local ordinances and their awareness.
Local ordinances may seem to have a big impact on those who live, work, or visit our town. Let's take a closer look at several key ones in this episode of Clayton For You.
Peaceful neighborhoods are important to us, which is why we have a noise ordinance in place. To avoid unwanted disturbances, keep noise levels reasonable, especially late at night. This includes loud music, parties, animals, lawn equipment, and vehicles. Another way we keep our community safe is through the peddler permit ordinance. It requires vendors to obtain permits for door-to-door sales or temporary stands, and limits when solicitation can occur. Always ask for the Clayton Police issued ID and permit. If they refuse or act aggressively, close your door and call 911. In addition to neighborhood safety rules, ordinances help support safe movement throughout the town. Bicycles and skateboards are banned on sidewalks to prevent collisions. Additionally, dirt bikes and off-road vehicles are only allowed on private property with permission. These rules reduce risks to pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Parking ordinances help keep the roads accessible for all. Avoid blocking driveways or parking in restricted zones such as fire lanes, fire hydrants, or business-only areas. Violating these ordinances could lead to fines or towing.
For more details or a full list of ordinances, visit our website. Thanks for watching, and be sure to follow us on social media to keep up with Clayton For You and other town updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative. Next on the agenda is the trash installation and management MOU.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to introduce Ms. Samantha Crop. She is the Noose River Keeper and Director of Advocacy for Sound Rivers. She will be sharing information on trash traps and other interesting stormwater information tonight.
Thank you all, council, for having me tonight. Again, my name is Samantha Crop. I've spoken here before, and so recognize many of you. I'm your Noose River Keeper and Director of Advocacy at Sound Rivers. I spend a lot of my time in the field, monitoring water quality throughout the Noose River Basin. And we do have programs doing water quality sampling and trash reduction efforts here in Clayton. We also run a hotline in which we receive pollution investigation calls from the public, and so we will look into those concerns all over the Noose watershed, which has brought us, of course, here as well. And so I'm thankful tonight to have the opportunity to present on a program that is very near and dear to my heart and that I've been talking to a couple of your city council members about over the past, I think, a couple of years now. And so it's really exciting to have the opportunity to share this project with you. Just a little more about Sound Rivers, in case you have not heard about our organization. We are a nonprofit, and we are over 43 years old, and we don't just work in the Noose Basin. We also work in the Pamlico-Tar Basin. And our whole mission is to uphold the promise of the Clean Water Act, which is to protect our waterways for fishability, swimability, drinkability, accessibility for everyone. So that is what we do out there. And out of all the water quality pollution issues that I deal with on a day-to-day, the one that I'm here to present tonight to you about is litter pollution and the problem of litter that makes its way into our waterways. And so I talk to a lot of people about this, despite the fact that I'm wearing heels. I spend a lot of time in waiters in dirty creeks, talking to people about why dirt ends up and why pollution ends up in our creeks. And a lot of folks don't realize that this is a stormwater problem. This is a problem caused by, as you all know, too many impervious surfaces and too much trash ending up on our sidewalks, on our front yards, in those impervious surfaces, and flowing into our waterways. And the result is that we have a huge amount of litter that ends up in our creeks, flows downstream into our bigger rivers like the Noose, and then flows further downstream into the Pamlico-Sound and into the ocean. And so right now, what we're looking at is 95% of that trash is plastic, and that includes hard plastic, soft plastic, and styrofoam in that category. And this plastic, as we know, it breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces of plastic, microplastics, and it accumulates into the bodies of aquatic species and eventually into our bodies if we're eating those species. And so this isn't just a concern for fish. It's a concern for us because we eat, a lot of us, oysters, fish, crabs, you know, proteins. These things bioaccumulate into those bodies and our bodies, and they cause, you know, an array of health impacts that, again, I'm sure most of you are familiar with. But just to hammer home that this is a, you know, a real problem that deserves a real solution. And so the solution that we're presenting to you today, as certainly not a silver bullet, but as one good approach, is this trash trap program. We started this program back in 2022 when I first joined the Sound Rivers team. And the idea is to install these devices that you see a photo of. These are passive litter traps, and they function on small urban creeks. So this is not a Noose River solution, but they are built to intercept pollution, litter, as it flows downstream in these small urban creeks before it reaches the Noose River. And so it's a passive solution, meaning that we are not out there day in and day out doing that cleaning, that work of rolling the boulder up the hill again and again. We're, you know, passively collecting litter, and then monthly we go out there and we clean it out. So it increases efficiency and effectiveness of our river cleanups. And specifications-wise, a lot of folks like to ask about this. This is essentially the size and shape of the machine itself. Two feet high, six feet wide, eight feet long, 250 pounds. It's a heavy, good, solid thing, but it floats. And so as the water levels rise, this thing floats on its buoys. Fish can swim underneath. And it's made of galvanized steel and aluminum and mesh. And so what we're looking for when we look for a place to install this is, like I said, an urban stream with a bank width of no more than 50 feet and a max historical flow of 5,000 CFS, which if you're into stormwater, that's a huge amount of flow. So we don't really worry too much about that. We're not going to see that on our little creeks here. Just a before versus after photo. I think this is pretty compelling. This is one of our trash traps in Raleigh's Little Rock Creek. And so because these traps have been so effective in the places that we've put them, since 2022, we've expanded this program all over the Noose and the Tar-Pamlico River Basins. So just in the Noose watershed, we have now three traps in the city of Raleigh. So the city of Raleigh has expanded their program and actually gone from having us bring a program to them to actually investing in their budget in these. We have one in Kinston, we have one in New Bern, we have one in Washington and Greenville, and we're hoping to put two more in Johnston County this year. So key considerations, I think, just preempting some potential questions that folks here might have. I mentioned that these allow for aquatic life to pass underneath them, so this isn't gonna get in the way or harm wildlife. It is designated to withstand high storm flows, so I mentioned that. A lot of folks have questions about extreme weather events and hurricanes. We have taken some of these out for the big weather events, but that's a decision that we make on a case-by-case basis. And typically, they're good to ride the storms. This is actually a picture of one of ours with the last snowpocalypse, and it did just fine. And it's also located in areas to avoid user conflicts, so no one's fishing, boating, trying to play in there. These are urban, kind of dirtier, littery creeks. And it does not contribute to flooding itself because it floats. And again, we can remove it ahead of extreme storms. It's pretty easy to get in and out of a creek. And this is the good part, the fun part. These things have huge impacts. We've seen, you know, just in terms of litter reduction, that we have an estimated annual collection rate of 1,000 pounds a year. That's for our more heavy flow, heavy litter, urban creeks. But also, we have a huge investment from community in these. We have worked with Girl Scouts, environmental organizations, local Rotary Clubs, you know, just the general community open cleanout events. And we've engaged over 300 community members in the time that we've been running this program in these cleanouts. And so just again, a really good way to get community members involved. And we've just started this program of Adopt a Trap. So not only are we hosting cleanouts, but local community groups can adopt a trap and clean it out themselves. So just some numbers, for those of you who appreciate that. These are the traps that we currently have installed. And again, we have over 300 volunteers and over 7,000 pounds of trash collected. And these are all gone in at different times. Some of these are brand new, and some of these have been in for a couple of years. So just to kind of summarize what the proposal is here in the next few slides is, you know, essentially, what we've talked about, you know, with other city council members and other cities that we've done this, is what are the benefits to the city? Why would a city want to put something like this in a creek? And I think that there is a lot of benefits. Aside from the litter reduction itself is the community benefits, the education, teaching people about stormwater. This is something required under a stormwater permit, of course, so it kind of serves that purpose as well. But it's also something that's just a good, a good thing for community. And it also is part of being a member of a growing group of municipalities who are doing this litter-free rivers program. I think it's showing leadership in litter reduction and some innovation in a pretty dark, you know, a dark context of litter is a tough topic, and this is a, you know, potentially hopeful solution. So specifically, we did scout out a proposed location. This is where we're proposing to put this trap. This is in Little Creek. The blue pin is just rough. We haven't picked the exact spot on the creek, but somewhere in that vicinity, as you can see, so that shape is the watershed drainage area to that point on the creek. So every drop of water that falls in that shape eventually ends up in Little Creek and will go to that trap. And so as you can see, it drains a portion of 70 and a lot of impervious surface. It's over 14% impervious in that shape, and that's old data, so you can imagine it's more now. So the last thing I'll say before opening to questions is just, what is our role in this? We're bringing this ask to the city of Clayton essentially just for permission to do this in your town and to partner on reaching out to community and working together. And so we, Sound Rivers, would be responsible for installation of the trap, purchase of the trap, and maintenance. We'd be responsible for ensuring that that maintenance happens, and we would hold the liability, essentially just hoping to work with Clayton in terms of making sure that community is engaged and that this trap is loved. And that's all I've got. Happy to do questions?
Awesome. Questions, Mr. Casey?
I don't have any questions because I actually saw one of these in action in Raleigh. Junior Women's Club, my wife voluntarily told me one day to go help assist in cleaning one of these trash traps out. And just the impact and the collection, it was very eye-opening and alarming. And, I mean, I've seen it in person. I mean, these things work really impressively. Obviously, Sound Rivers is a great organization, educational organization. I think this is great for the community. I've talked to some of the Boy Scouts, two different troops in Clayton, and they've expressed interest to help volunteer and clean this out, too. So I'm all about it. I'm excited about it. And thank you all for choosing Clayton as one of the opportunities to put these in Johnston County.
Awesome. Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
I'd echo Councilman Casey's comments, same on all of that. Thank you so much for pursuing this, hanging in there with us through the process of getting you here tonight. And I just, it's such a rare opportunity where you have something like this that's a win-win. We don't make a lot of easy decisions up here, but this seems like one of them. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to add one comment that this is not only the first trash trap in Clayton, it's also the first trash trap in Johnston County.
Leading the way. All right. Yeah, I think that deserves a round of applause. All right. Anything else you want to present on? Okay, good. If that's the case, then I will turn it over to the council for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the trash installation and management MOU. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, and motion carries. Thank you. Outstanding. Up next, under introduction and special presentation, will be Engineers Week proclamation. Give the floor to Mayor Pro Tem Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town of Clayton proclamation, Engineers Week. Whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technical challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. And now, therefore, on behalf of Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim February 16th through the 22nd, 2025, be recognized as Engineers Week proclaimed by Clayton Town Council this 17th day of February 2025. Signed, Mayor Jody McLeod. So if you've got the engineers in the house here, you guys can come on down here and...
Yep. Of course.
Well, good evening, everyone. I would again like to thank the engineering department staff for all the hard work they do. I'd also like to thank the council and other executive staff for your continued support, as this affords us the opportunity to serve and enhance the quality of life for all Clayton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have a nice round of applause for engineers. Thank you all. I'm just curious, did you go down there, Rich, because you wanted to be a part of your engineering team, or you still think you're an engineer?
Mr. Sims actually voluntarily told me to come with him, so. But I also do consider myself an engineer still.
I don't care what's going on. Rich always says, I don't know, sir. We'll figure it out. That's what we do. We'll figure it out. That's awesome. Up next will be the Government Communicators Day proclamation, and I would like to give the floor to Councilmember Archer.
Good evening. Town of Clayton proclamation, Government Communicators Day. Whereas Government Communicators Day was first celebrated in North Carolina on February 24th, 2024, and is nationally observed on the third Friday of February. And whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate, and engage their communities. And whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved. And whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions. And whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard. And now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim February 21st, 2025, as Government Communicators Day in Clayton, and commend its observance to all citizens proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council on the 17th day of February 2025.
Yep. Yeah. Come, come get it. I don't know who's gonna take a picture of communications team. I don't know how this is gonna work without you. I thought he worked at cultural arts. Oh, okay. Let's have a nice round of applause for our communications team. They do a remarkable job for the town of Clayton, and we appreciate each and every one of you for your contributions daily. All right. Up next is National Leadership Day proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, National Leadership Day. Whereas National Leadership Day reminds us that there is a leader within all of us, it is an annual event that gives us the chance to reflect on the importance of capable leadership within society. And whereas it reminds us that we have the capability to lead in a variety of situations, and encourages us to take up leadership roles that bring about positive change. Whereas national leadership serves as an opportunity to celebrate our role models, reflect on our own untapped potential, and determine how we can improve our leadership abilities. Whereas it is important that each Whereas it is important that each of us develop a willingness to lead when we can because it puts us in a better position to use our talents to improve our communities. And now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim February 20th, 2025 National Leadership Day proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this 17th day of February 2025. And I would just like to acknowledge that leadership is not just what is sitting behind this dais, but it's also who's sitting in front of us. And it takes all of us utilizing our leadership skills, utilizing our time and our talent to make Clayton be a better place and a place where people want to come, work, live and raise their family. So let's have a nice round of applause for all of our leaders and we thank you. And up next is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Annual Update, and I'd like to give the floor to Ms. Emily Beddingfield, the Advisory Board Chair.
Sorry. I should have checked the mic. Thank you for having, taking a moment to hear us out this evening. We just kind of want to give you an update of what we've been up to and where we're looking in the future. So just a quick overview of our purpose, mission and membership. We of course serve as the advisory board for Parks and Recreation, but also the town as a whole. We are liaisons between the citizens, town staff and you all as the council. We advise on all sorts of things related to recreation, policies, programs, personnel, land acquisition and disposal, as well as long range programs and policies as we move forward and grow. There are 13 of us. We are a robust board. I think it's fantastic. We have an amazing board. We have people from all walks of life in Clayton. We have a bunch of them here today that were able to make time out of their evening to come and, and support us as we stand up here. People are engaging in all aspects of Parks and Recreation that are on our board. So I think there's, each and everyone brings a really unique perspective to the board, which I really appreciate. So now I'm going to hand it off to Natasha.
Yes, I'm Natasha Ellis Smith, the Vice President. And I just want to say that Parks and Rec is one of the most public facing departments in the actual community. We actually help people by developing leaders, allowing health benefits and economic benefits as well. We provide a place for children to grow and we also serve the community and make sure that everybody is healthy. We want to continue to keep Clayton the premier community for active families. And in order to do this, we need to strengthen our communities. This occurs in multiple ways by bringing neighborhoods together and actually getting all people, all ages to actually do fitness and become more healthy. We also like to have programs, as I said, for teens and kids so that they'll be developing leadership skills and actually connecting with other people outside of their neighborhood because you know that everybody comes to the community center just to interact and have fun. So that's a few of our goals.
As the advisory board, one of the few things that we have done in the previous years is joining the steering committee and provide some advice and feedback as the town conducted the Parks and Recreation Master Plan last year. Also as the advisory board, we have also worked with the Park and Rec staff on accomplish some of the project that started by the previous park bond and also work in a close alliance with News River Football Alliance to conduct some of the activity that you may have seen around town around here. And then we are, we also still continue working with the park staff to expand our programming that we offer as the town. As we're looking forward into the year 2025, I have just mentioned that we had just recently completed and the council have already seen and reviewed the master plan. One of the things we really would like to do is to help the town find, find the time, find the resources to possibly carry some of those projects that has been listed and provided in the master plan going forward. As you may have already seen during the master plan presentations, the people of Clayton really love what we offer. What they love, what they love more is we can provide even more of that. So, so as one of the analysis conducted by the, by the firm was that as the town, as the populations in a town of a size, we are actually still a little bit under what we really should be providing to our people. So that's definitely one of the things we would like to work with council, work with the departments to make sure that we continue to offer to our best ability to the town of people.
Okay, and I'm going to wrap us up here quickly this evening. We are paying our cuteness tax with some great photos of kids out there enjoying our Parks and Recreation facilities. There's always something going on for folks in our community. And then we have a couple of photos showing some of our larger events, municipal park in downtown, well attended, extremely popular. And I want to point out that these pictures obviously don't capture the day-to-day use of our parks. I mean, if we think about it, how many people are engaging in some way, shape or form with our Parks and Recreation facilities on any given day? Think about our greenways. You've got pickup basketball games. We have adult and youth athletic leagues. We have the community center, which is full of classes and events and is just bursting at the seams with activity. It might be somebody just grabbing a cup of coffee with a friend on a park bench, pushing a baby in a stroller. And even the future swarms of people who will be flocking to our pickleball courts, which we are excited to see that those will be opening soon. So there's just a constant use of our parks and just a massive amount of people in the Town of Clayton that are touched and impacted by that. I know when I think about Clayton, I think about downtown and I think about our Parks and Recreation system. To me, it's part of Clayton's identity. It's part of what makes Clayton Clayton. And our tagline really is the premier community for active families. And I think we do a wonderful job living up to that. I love that vision. Our board loves that vision. I know you all love that vision because we continue to see your support of Parks and Recreation as, as each budget year comes through. But as we've just pointed out, our master plan showed that maybe we're not quite hitting those benchmarks that we want to and need to, to really achieve that vision of a premier community for active families. So I ask you guys, as you go into budget season and as you're thinking about this year's budget, long-term capital improvement project budgets, alternative funding mechanisms like bonds and other opportunities that may present themselves, that time and time again, please reach up and grab the master plan off of the proverbial shelf and don't let it collect an ounce of dust because we are committed to it. You have an amazing board standing behind you, cheering you on as we can, as we can, and we all help provide guidance. We so appreciate your continued support. We have an amazing staff to support as well. And we just continue looking forward to opportunities to come and stand in front of you and work with you and we thank you for your time.
Awesome. Well, we thank you for your leadership and all of your fellow board members as well. As I spoke to earlier, that really what makes Clayton a great place is all of the leadership on every level that we have. And, you know, we also pride ourselves on quality of life around here, right? So many people want to come and live here because they're like Clayton's got a phenomenal quality of life. And if anyone ever doubts the use of Park and Recreation and facilities, you just let that greenway go shut down for a day or two and social media blows up, right? They're like, why is it closed? It's almost like they go out there to get their fix, right? It's their time for fresh air and to get away from the stress and just to enjoy. And it's wonderful to know that, you know, Clayton and this town council really working diligently to continue to showcase what we have and to improve upon what we have. But we couldn't do it without wonderful boards like Park and Recreation and we couldn't do it without wonderful staff out at Park and Recreation as well. So if you're here tonight with Park and Recreation, would you please stand just so we can see you? Yeah. Let's have a nice round of applause for this group. Thank you. Outstanding. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much.
All right, up next is our first public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Conrad O'Madey, Planning Director, the town. This is one of two annexation requests that are next to each other here. And the first one here is 3967 Powhatan Road. It's approximately 0.46 acres. It's non-contiguous. It's currently in the ETJ of the town. It's located just off of Powhatan Road. We have done the prior sufficiency check and a request for the public hearing that is before you this evening. You can see the public noticing dates right there as well. Here's an aerial image of the property. Just to the left there is, is Highway 70. And that's on the south side of Powhatan Road. The current zoning is light industrial. And the feature, the feature land use map is employment center. Staff is recommending that this be approved and I'm available if there are any questions.
All right, are there any questions for staff? If not, this has been noted as a public hearing, so now I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I don't have any, oh, my name is John Scarpa, 1304 News Ridge Drive, Clayton, North Carolina. First I've heard about this and the first thing I wanted to know is since it's non-contiguous, what is the advantage to us? I understand the advantage to the applicant. Anybody would want to be a member of Clayton. But what is the advantage to us? If there's an advantage to us, then I'm all for it. But I'd like to hear somebody explain what it is before I toss my support to this effort. So with that, I'll, I'll sit down and just one last thing. I hope you noticed that I'm showing you the, this imitation is the highest form of...
I was thinking you're following the leader. I like it.
That's what I'm doing.
Assuming that question was for myself. That question is of as projects require utilities to be connected to property, we require them to be annexed. So this property, while there's no current project, it will open it up. There's the, the next request is going to be for the property just to the east and that would be for eventual development of that property into increasing our tax base, increasing business opportunities and development for the town along that area. So that's one of the reasons why you would annex and also this puts this in the corporate town limit. So we then can collect some additional tax revenue as well. There are some benefits to annexation. It's a valid question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Ms. Archer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-02-01.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-02-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Our next public hearing is item number 2024-128 ANX 3945 Powhatan Road Annexation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Conrad O'Madey, Planning Director. Again, this is a request for the property. It's just adjacent to the one you just voted on, but it is at 3945 Powhatan Road, approximately 1.57 acres. It's non-contiguous to the corporate boundary. It is in our ETJ. We have done the sufficiency checks and the request for the public hearing that is before you tonight. Here's an aerial image of that property. Again, business, Highway 70 is to the west of this property and it's on the south side of Powhatan Road. The current property, the current zoning for the property is light industrial, LID. And the feature land use map has this designated as employment center. Staff is recommending approval of this request and I'm available if there are any questions.
Any questions or comments for staff? Hearing none. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Mr. Meems?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of orders 2025-02-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-02-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Conrad O'Madey, Planning Director. This is a conditional rezoning request to allow what will be duplex on each lot. And there are two lots that are proposed on this rezoning. So the current zoning is residential high density and this request will be changing the zoning to conditional zoning residential district. The properties are 0.14 acres and 0.21 acres, approximately about 6,000 square foot and about 8,000 to 9,000 square foot. The properties are vacant. There is, they're located at the intersection of North Church Street and East Front Street, just across the railroad tracks north of the downtown area. The public noticing was performed with the state, per the state statutes, so that we did post the properties there. The concept plan here shows the, both of the properties and it does show a duplex on each of those lots. You'll notice that there is a 15-foot shared driveway on the side of Church Street. This was, this would have been a 24-foot driveway based on the planning board's discussions at their December 17th meeting of last year. But there is a manhole there which did prevent them from having that pan be as wide as what was requested. But this did open up that shared driveway to be a 24-foot wide, which would allow two-way circulation behind the duplex. You notice that the duplex is, don't have any parking along the front. This was some discussion with staff throughout the, throughout this project review to have the parking located behind that kind of retained that single-family residential character along Front Street. This did require that the homes be set further up to the street and that's some of the deviations from the district standards that this conditional rezoning would allow. from the district standards that this conditional rezoning would allow. So there is some connection of the sidewalk that will be part of this along East Front Street as well as on Church Street. The facade, one entry on the front facade for each duplex, and there is voluntary compliance to the UDOs, the Unified Development Ordinance Residential Design Guidelines as well. This is where those setbacks are articulated. You have a 5-foot... Let me see if this works here. Yes. Here's the reduced setback along this property line. You do notice that the right-of-way is bigger than... Does not go right up against the sidewalk there, but that would be the 5-foot setback and then a 10-foot setback, the street setback along from Church Street. This would also allow a duplex on a lot that was only 6,000 square foot, where 7,200 square foot would be required per the UDO. I think that this is somewhat of an acceptable, because this lot over here, while they could have recombined, there is some sensitive land to the right of the... I'm sorry, to the... Would be the... On the right side of this other duplex on this lot right here. So you have a bigger lot, but we didn't go down the road of having this be a subdivision of sorts. I think we're okay with them having a smaller lot on one of the duplex lots and a larger lot, but a similar buildable area for both of those properties. The future land use map does run differently on the property. You have a downtown neighborhood and a downtown support running along the property. So the front of the property is kind of bisected with two different land use map classifications. Here are some of the discussion items that the planning board has recommended and the staff worked with the applicants on. Let the width be 24-foot along that shared driveway. As I explained, they have a manhole there that limits some of that ability to do so. The building placement, moving the buildings closer to Front Street allowed the driveway in the back to be a little bit wider than originally proposed. The curb cut restrictions, this would remove a curb cut along Front Street to focus the entry into the duplexes along Church Street. Neighborhood meeting was held, and again, in accordance with the UDO, following the planning board's meeting.
It was held?
It was held, yes, sir. Originally, they had a neighborhood meeting on a weekend at 11:30 at the local brewery, and that was not per the UDO standards, unfortunately. So they did hold another neighborhood meeting during the weekday from 6 to 8 o'clock. Considerations, this concept plan, if the rezoning is be approved, that the concept plan and the conditions of approval run with the property. The planning board did make a recommendation per motion one of the consistency statements sheet. For reference, here are those consistency statements in brief that would allow council to... With your motion. Staff is recommending approval of this request, and I am available if there are any questions. We also have the conditions of approval on a separate PDF as well as a concept plan if you had any questions more specific. I can pull those up as well.
Okay. Any questions for staff, Mr. Sims?
So just trying to get some little clarity on a couple things. So you're saying that it won't be... The driveway won't be 24? That what you're saying, because of the manhole?
Correct. So...
It'll be how?
I'll go to that. So correct, on this slide right here, the driveway at the Church Street will be, I want to say, 15-foot, and then it will open up to a 24-foot width once it goes onto the property. So rather than having a 24-foot wide driveway where it would meet the asphalt of Church Street, that would be 15-foot, and it's because of the location of a manhole. So when staff was looking at this as a possibility of revising the drawings after the planning board meeting, staff realized, oh, there is a manhole here, and that would pose as some challenge to installing that driveway there. So it would be 15, and then it would open up to a 24-foot wide.
Got you. So as I'm looking at this, there's eight parking spaces that'll be in the rear, correct?
Correct.
And we're promoting no... We don't want any parking out front.
So this would all be onsite required parking. Any off-street parking would be in addition to what is currently going to be on the site.
Okay. Could you explain to me about... So it says 30 feet wide access easement and setbacks. Could you explain that to me, what's going on over there to the right?
Sure. So what this easement does, this easement allows access to parcel two.
Oh, okay.
So otherwise, parcel two, since there is going to be a removal of a curb cut from Front Street for parcel two, that access will be shared with parcel one to access the back of the property.
And let's say it's filled up with eight cars back there. You feel that's adequate for people backing out, turning around, all that?
I do. I want to say that's what the UDO would require is for that use type, and so that would be acceptable.
And where would overspill parking go? Like, what if they ran to somebody that has three cars?
Then I would say that additional parking would have to be located off-site on what would be off-street parking. So you would have onsite parking for residents, people who have a car or two cars for each unit, and then any additional cars would have to find some additional parking off-site.
And is parking permitted on North Church Street on both sides? My point I'm getting to is, what if they decide to park in the street?
Like along the curb there, along Front Street and Church Street?
There's nothing to stop them from parking there.
I don't think there's any no parking signage along that Church Street public right-of-way. Typically, you would be able to park unless there was signage that said no parking along the right-of-way.
And to the right of the second duplex, all the X's? Like, is that low grounds? Is that like undevelopable property? To the far left?
Let me pull up the actual plan real quick.
Is that the ditch?
You can see that says top of bank to the right, right there.
Okay, so it's the ditch?
Right. You can see that C slash L is the center line of the ditch right there.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, I'll take this opportunity to open up... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Casey. Go ahead.
I just... First, I want to say I thought the planning board did a really good job offering some suggestions, especially extending that driveway. I like the idea and the thought process in that meeting of moving that house closer to the Front Street. I see that there is a right-of-way there too, so I'm assuming that it's not going to appease any, I guess, traffic concerns or visibility if you have somebody coming down Front Street, trying to make sure there's a stop sign there, but then... There shouldn't be any issues, I guess, with... I mean, although the duplexes are brought up closer, they're still line of sight with the intersection there to not cause any concerns.
Correct. If I'm remembering our street design from the town for site distance triangle, you would measure it from a dot that is just inside of the right-of-way. You would measure 10-foot, and then 70-foot would be your site distance triangle. So just by kind of... We don't have that delineated here, but it's... I think it's safe to assume that that site distance triangle would not be affected by the building right here if you're going to be putting a 10-foot out. So this... The angle from the 10-foot outwards would, I'm going to say, would not be impacted by the placement of the home right there.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I said, so this is still two parcels, so...
Correct.
That's fine. I mean, from a long-term standpoint, even if they remain two parcels, that it's a shared drive.
Yeah, I think we are comfortable having this as one rezoning, that is, two parcels. And it was really discussions with staff with regards to where the parking would be for these two units. And then working with them, the idea was if we can have the parking located behind the structures, then you would preserve that character of having a garage not really be part of the project. The... You're looking at, if you're to drive by here, you're going to have one entry point off of front, so it would look like a single-family detached product, even though it's going to be serving two units on it.
Okay, thank you.
And the applicant is here, if you have any questions of them as well.
All right, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, once again, John Scarpa, 1304 News Ridge Road, News Ridge Drive, Clayton, North Carolina. Just a couple of questions and a point. The driveway being reduced to 15 feet at the entrance onto the road seems to me, based upon 72 years of life, as being too narrow for the number of people who will be going in and out. There is four spaces for each of the duplexes, but that's not accounting for when people have company over. And so there's likely to be a significant amount of people trying to come in and out of that driveway, which will impact the traffic on Church Street as you can't get two cars to go into that driveway as one car is coming out and the other one is trying to get in. It's just not going to happen, especially as we get older. Our judgment is a little less than the 16 or 17-year-olds. The other question that I had, and nobody has addressed it so far, is... I heard a tale that there was a community meeting, but nobody's ever mentioned what the attitude of the local community was. I think that's something that needs to be ascertained, since I'm personally aware of where this property is located, and I think it needs to be developed because it's problematic right across the street from the railroad. It would be very nice for Clayton to have something that's attractive there. But I have a question about the driveway and the sufficiency of an objection to there being a storm drain there, or what do they call it? A manhole, thank you. Why can't you pave around the manhole? And, you know, just maintain a driveway. There are manholes all over New York City, trust me, and they drive over them all the time. So that's my only concerns. I hope that, you know, you guys, when you put your heads together, can think about those things, because it's a little bit concerning to me. And lastly, but not least, I remember being at one of the planning meetings where we discussed the possibility of getting commuter rail stop somewhere along in Clayton. Would this property interfere with the development of that? Because that... Well, I see PortaCasey's saying no, so that's good. Okay. My concern is answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hosses.
How you doing?
Good, sir.
Well, yeah, I got to tell you who I am. I'm Timothy Hodges. I live at 347 Sloughmore Street. And I want to ask some questions about the process, but I really don't know what I want to ask. That's letting you know how ignorant I am on this. But... Is there... Okay. Is there, I guess, probably through other channels, but is there a limit on... You have to have a certain amount of land on this, in this area, to put a duplex in? You know, is there a limit? It gotta be too big or too small for, you know, any sizes of a limit on it?
Conrad, can you address square footage for lot sizes to accommodate?
Yes, you put it right. Thank you.
Can the question be rephrased? I'm sorry.
His inquiry is about, is there a minimum square footage of a lot size to accommodate duplex?
Correct, yes. So a duplex has in our UDO a 7,200 square foot minimum lot size. So this project would be reducing that for the parcel one, which is 6,024.
Okay. So you're reducing the size of the lot to accommodate this duplex?
Yeah, one of the parcels is less than that 7,200 square foot minimum requirement. So through the conditional rezoning, this would allow for that lot to be smaller than what the UDO requires.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's go back to clarification on the neighborhood meeting, because that came across, you know, because what is written on the screen, if you can go back to that, doesn't state that a meeting was held. It states that a meeting needed to be held, and it needed to be held on this time of day and this kind of hour, but it doesn't address that it actually was held. And I'm not hearing any testimony or feedback of any neighborhood feedback. You know, are people okay with this new construction being so close up to Front Street where the other houses are set back further, like all that kind of stuff?
So to confirm, we did get information from the applicant that there was a neighborhood meeting held. As far as the responses, perhaps the applicant might be able to articulate anything that they might have heard at that. They haven't related anything negative in that regard. We did do the public noticing, so we staff posted the property, and we also sent a letter out to 300-foot property on a radius, and we received no comment from the community.
Second? Sure. Comment anything you wanted.
Thank you. Just to reassure you, Mr. Scarpa, in the online agenda, it may not have been presented in the presentation this evening, but in the online agenda, the neighborhood meeting materials were in there. So the date and time of the meeting, as well as the attendance, which in this case, there were no attendees, as well as the list of people who were notified about the meeting. So just so you're aware of that.
Mr. Garen Bosick is the applicant also. If you'd like...
Hey, everyone. My name's Garen. So the neighborhood meeting that we had to replace the first one, that was not per the UDO, no one showed up after an hour, so I just said that there were no notes involved. The one that I did have on Saturday, the owner of the house across Church Street, his name is Mark Brunner, I believe, showed up, and I explained to him who I was and my vision for the project, and he said that he liked it, and he seemed on board with it and had really good feedback. So I wasn't able to put those notes in it because that one was voided, but he was there for the first one, but the second one, no one showed up.
Awesome, thank you. That's a lot of clarification for the record, and that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? If not, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Mr. Casey?
I had some questions for the applicant, please, if you could come up here. I had some questions for the applicant, please, if you could come up here. Uh, first off, um, I know on the, in the planning board, they discussed a, a sidewalk or a walkway from the sidewalk to the front doors. Is that something that was discussed with staff and is, can be included in the project?
I certainly would like to involve them. I think that's done during concept plan or construction drawings. I'm a.
I'm sorry, I got a slow track, mine, I was distracted, sorry about.
No, that's okay. I was asking about, um, it was brought up during the planning board to have a, a walkway, a paved walkway from the sidewalk to the front door.
I, I don't recall that, um, particular component to it, but that's something that would, would make sense to have as part of the design. If it's something that you're willing to, to have as a condition of approval, to have walkways up to, from, from Front Street?
From East. I mean, are you minimal of that?
I'm in, like, favor of that. I think that's a great idea. I, I was planning on doing that during construction drawings.
Okay.
If the project moved forward, I didn't know if, like, I didn't know what phase we added that on, but if we need to add that now, then.
Okay, well, that's, I just want to make sure, you know, I, if we don't ask, you know, some, some developers won't do it, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of want to throw it out, throw it out there, so appreciate you.
Certainly, yeah. My vision for this was to give families an opportunity to be able to walk downtown and enjoy that space. So I think an avenue for them to get to and from is a good idea.
Yeah, um, no, I appreciate that, and I just, I kind of had a curiosity. It's a duplex, but there's a one front door. I know the intent is to make it look like a single-family dwelling. Is it, is that a common area that it goes to, or?
So the door, so the, you can, can I switch to the?
Yeah.
Elevation.
The elevations. For, for a point of clarity, if there are conditions that get added, we will need to table this item and have those conditions been brought back forth after them are signed by the applicant, just as a matter of due, of process.
So you can pull up the site elevations.
So do me.
Yeah.
So I decided to do this because it was recommended, um, in the UDO under the residential design guidelines, and I thought it would give the look of these a great view from Front Street, because it looks like a single-family home and it, you know, preserves the character of downtown Clayton while creating new opportunities. That door could lead into a foyer, but that eats up, like, a five or six-foot by 10-foot room, and these duplexes just don't have the space for that. So I decided we'll put one door on the front, we'll put the other door on the right side of that. We'll have a sidewalk leading from Front Street, leading straight to that door, as well as from the parking. So it's, it's just take the front door and just move it to that corner. So you'll see, like, a little awning from the street, but it won't actually look like a multifamily home.
Okay, okay. Uh, and then one of the other, uh, I guess just, I actually have a few just real quick comments. Um, you did, during the planning board, said you were planning on living in one of the, the duplexes, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, awesome. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome downtown.
Thank you, yeah.
Another point that I, I looked at on here, um, great question about the required square footage. I guess if you combine the two parcels together, it's greater than 1,700, 17,000 square feet. So, I mean, I don't know how that, you know, in, yeah, I guess, you know, technically, they're, they're subdivided lots, but.
Correct.
This is one project, so.
Correct.
You know, it would still meet that minimum square footage if you basically were to combine the two lots together.
Correct, yeah, if you, if you were to look at that as, as a project's overall acreage and size, then the, the uses would, would exceed the minimum requirements, right? But we're, since they're two separate lots, we're treating them as two separate, um, components to that overall project.
Yeah, okay, and then I guess lastly, you know, and I'm kind of going on this little bit of a soapbox, um, you know, downtown's a beautiful, special downtown, and this is a unique spot downtown. Uh, there's some very stately homes and historic homes. Um, I know you will, it sounds like you have all intention of it, but just, you know, I know you build it with pride, you know, we, we, we want a legacy house, leggie, legacy house that people can, you know, generations, uh, foregone, uh, can, can see and enjoy, um, in that location. So, um, you know, our downtown's pretty cool, so we want to obviously keep it as cool as it is. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I wrote this little speech about that. Can I read it to you guys?
Sure.
Okay, cool. So, like, the reason, or when I moved to Clayton, the reason I fell in love with it was its unique, small-town charm and vibrant downtown strip. I want to preserve and enhance that charm, which is why I'm committed to ensuring any new development respects the town's character. The duplex design proposing will feature upgraded facades and designed to be, to appear as single-family homes, helping maintain the aesthetic of our downtown. This thoughtful approach will provide valuable housing options for professionals and families who want to live close to the heart of downtown Clayton, further supporting our town's growth while preserving its essence. As the council members who help shape the future of our community, your support is crucial in making sure that any new development aligns with this vision as we all share for a vibrant, connected, and thriving town. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I've got one quick question, just for clarification. Can you tell me, so I see that door, I was just having trouble visualizing where the other door is. The other door's going to be on the side with an awning on it, on the right side.
That's right, it'll be, yeah, so it'll be on the side, so.
Okay.
Probably, I would say, three or four feet from the corner there.
Just clarifying, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
What are the wishes of the council? Ms. Archer.
Uh, thank you for that information, and I appreciate all the words that you wrote. I could tell that was very heartfelt, so that means a lot. Um, I'm just sort of thinking through the door thing. I know that that came up at, at the planning board meeting as well. So is this the only entrance? So each duplex would have one entrance, or would there also be a rear entrance? I couldn't remember how that part of the conversation went.
Yeah, so the goal would have two entrances, so they'll be able to get in from, because they're most likely going to be getting out of their cars and coming into the back door, and I want to give them an entrance that's not just like a slider. I want to give them like an actual door they can lock with a deadbolt, but I also want to have a front door that gives them access as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
And where, where's the mailbox going to be for each duplex? Like, how's the postal service going to service this?
I don't know what the UDO says about mailboxes on Front Street. I don't know if it's attached to the house, or if it's something that we would put in the yard. I'm not clear on that.
I would think, I know on my house downtown, it's on the house. So I would think that would be a good solution if we can do that with the UDO on something new, because then you don't have a projection outside near the road, and it'll complicate, I would think, the one, the entrance on the side, if you could put it on the house. It's not for me to say, it's for the post office and the UDO to say, but.
Sure, yes.
That could be a good solution.
I agree.
Is that all you have, Ms. Archer?
The rest that I had was just comments for council consideration.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, we recently completed our downtown master plan, and there was a lot of discussion about density and how to accomplish density in our downtown. Um, in, increasing our density downtown is good for foot traffic on Main Street, it's good for business, it, it creates that vibrancy that people enjoy and like. So, um, I know there was a lot of conversation about it and some concern about how we were ever going to get that density, how we were going to achieve that, and there was some hesitation and concern that perhaps we would get there with a lot of apartment buildings or that sort of thing. So I just wanted to say that I see this as a good way to add density, maybe not to the numbers exactly that we need, that we're looking for, but, uh, this takes an underutilized lot, and instead of it being vacant, or instead of it being a single-family home, we have a proposal here that's a tasteful way to kind of maximize that space. So I, I very much like that that, that all aligns there. Um, yeah, that was it, thank you. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Mr. Grace.
I just, I just want to have more, one more comment to the applicant. You, you can stay seated. Uh, my daughter goes to Cooper, so we drive by that parcel, we drive by that parcel land every day, at least, at least twice, uh, of course during the week. That's a very tight-knit community, um, it's a very established community, so, you know, I know you will, it sounds like you are, it sounds like you're passionate about the project, you just obviously just keep, keep that in mind. It's a, it's a, it's a great area, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, it's, it's a lovely area. So I have no objections to the project at all. Um, I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Oh, you did?
I just saw the other part of my notes. Um, just for anyone else who might be watching this, who's looking at other multifamily development in Clayton, I did want to add that, um, for this particular project, you noticed, of course, that we, we made some compromises on the setback than the square footage, and we, we do that in situations where it's worth it. So in this case, you know, we're talking about a downtown area that's already established, and you're trying to work in what you can. So you have to get creative and you have to look for compromises. So in this case, we're getting what we want for downtown, we're getting something, you know, nice for that area, and in return, we're having to do things like compromise on setbacks and, and square footage. So I just wanted to, to comment on that as well.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Mayor Town Council, wanted to let you know that the applicant has agreed to the following condition. It's the installation of a sidewalk from East Front Street to the main entrance of each duplex shall be required, and he is signing revised conditions right now, so that it could be voted on if he's opted to do so.
Thank you. Well, let's roll.
If it's the wish of the council, I can make a motion. And I just want to confirm one more time. I know I've, I've asked this before, but we do have a fairly lengthy motion one here. Do I need to read this in its entirety? Okay, reference it. Then I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025 dash zero one dash zero one with the updated and amendment, amended conditions agreed upon this evening, um, as well as the statements in the motion sheet that this motion, this rezoning request is based on consistency with the future land use map, um, and this action is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025 dash oh one oh one with the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, uh, is 2024 dash 27 CZM, Amelia Church Town Homes, and I will entertain a motion to continue this item to the March 17th, 2025 council meeting.
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to the March 17th, 2025 council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Now we're going to jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Uh, two quick ones tonight. First and foremost, Joe, if you don't mind coming on up, I want to make sure I can formally introduce Joe Stallings, our new economic development director. Uh, this is Joe's second week on the job, uh, but he's no stranger to the area. Um, Joe comes to us from Granville County most recently, uh, but he lives in Garner, uh, has worked for the town of Garner, as well as the town of Benson. So very familiar with Clayton and our area and everything that we have to offer. So, um, we're very excited to have Joe on board and want to just introduce him formally to you all and give him an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mayor and Town Council, it's a pleasure to be before you all this evening. I look forward to serving the citizens of this town and helping bring about your vision that you've set forward. I've got big shoes to fill, uh, lucky a little bit of a roadmap to help me get there, but I'm excited about the future of this town. I'm excited to be a part of this great organization and look forward to helping advance our cause across the community and throughout the region. So thank you for allowing me to be here.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Get on the train and get ready to ride. Well, that's what our attorney said when he first got here, he's like, I jumped on the train and it ain't stopped since I got here.
Uh, one other thing, Mr. Mayor, um, we are currently tracking the winter weather that is proposed, or is going to be coming this, later this week. Uh, currently, it is appeared that we will be getting some sort of precipitation on Wednesday. Still a little bit early for us to make final decisions about what's going to happen, uh, from a, uh, opening perspective, uh, but we have gone ahead and postponed the planned retreat that we all were going to have on Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, that motion that you guys approved with the consent agenda to modify the standard, um, standard calendar was to extend both the May, excuse me, March 3rd and April 7th work sessions to be able to make up for the time that we, we're going to lose this week. Um, specific to the winter weather, uh, right now, they are calling for upwards of a quarter of an inch of ice and somewhere between one and two inches of snow potentially for our area. So, uh, Public Works has gone ahead and started brining the roads and preparing equipment, uh, as well as getting crews set up to be, uh, available, to be able to put salt or sand out as necessary. Electric Department has spoken with some of our outside contractors and have them on standby, uh, in the event we need them to assist with, uh, restoring power. So, um, we will wait until tomorrow's, uh, 11:30 a.m. briefing to make a final decision about opening of facilities on Wednesday, uh, but in the meantime, please make your preparations and, uh, be safe. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Town attorney?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Town clerk?
No report.
All right. Uh, up next, from other staff, we'll begin to update on the website redesign.
Um, doesn't seem that long ago I was up here talking about the first website we redid.
Right.
I think it was just a little more than three years ago, but here we are. We are at a new stage in it, and so we've been live for almost four years, and when we did that initial launch, you remember, a lot of our focus was on enhancing navigation, modernizing, modernizing design, creating a responsive layout for mobile and desktop, and then improve search and accessibility. So now we're on to the next step. It is time for a redesign. The reason for this is it is part of our contract, so it's not costing us anything. It's, uh, every four years, we get an annual review, and so with that, uh, we'll be allowed to keep up with essentially emerging technology and kind of revise our best practices of what we've been doing. So why now? One of the biggest pieces is there are new ADA compliance rules coming down in 2026, and we've got to be ready for that, uh, and that is, uh, going to be a big deal for us. Another is there's potential for alignment with our website domain. I know you guys, we've always had townofclaytonnc.org. We may be able to switch, we're working with IT, to claytonnc.gov. Uh, that will be a little shorter for everyone, so when you're typing all those emails, it should be a big time save, you know, over the course of 10, 20 years, uh, but we're really excited about that. Uh, the opportunity for streamlined navigation, again, improved search, adding key terms, building every page, uh, with quality and detail. Uh, and additionally, it'll allow us to also maximize the website modules that we have access to. We don't necessarily use all of them now, and that was largely because of how much staff time we were allowed to, or had the ability to apply to the website. But now we have a digital media specialist, which you guys so graciously gave us in this last budget, which we really appreciate. So, um, I know you've met him, but this is Joshua Probst. He's going to be leading the project for us this time, we're going to be working together, and he will be leading the content cleanup and the strategy. Uh, we're going to be partnering with all of the departments to streamline, again, navigation, content that's on the sites, um, just making the, sure the pages work on every device. Now, the last time we went with, we wanted to be responsive. Well, the data shows that most of our users are on mobile, so we are going to have a heavy, heavy focus on this refresh to make sure our mobile experience is top-notch. Um, again, we talked about the, uh, ADA compliance piece, and I just wanted to say just one more time how much I appreciate you allowing us to bring Josh on. I think it's going to be very beneficial to the town and for our ability to have our information housed in such a way that our residents, businesses, everyone can find it. All right, Josh, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members in Clayton residents. Uh, thank you all for allowing us to speak to you all here tonight, uh, and I'm really excited about this new role, uh, that I'm taking with the town, uh, in revamping the website, uh, and helping keep that going as we move forward in the future. Uh, so what I wanted to talk to you all about, uh, this evening is what that's going to look like as we go through this process. It is a very big process, just because it's a big website and a lot of moving pieces. Uh, so we've broken it down into five phases, and I'll kind of dive into those in just a moment, uh, but here's kind of a general timeline, and you have it also, uh, documented in your pamphlets as well. All right, so starting out, we'll be at phase one, uh, which we were planning All right, so starting out, we'll be at phase one, which we are planning to start next month. We've already started getting some of the pieces in motion, so we're going to be starting in March, and this will be phase one, the research and planning phase. So during this time, we'll be getting feedback about the website, what people like, what people don't like. We'll also be doing surveys, and we'd like to start some focus groups to really get the feedback from the community so we know what we need to do moving forward to make it more accessible for everybody. We've already started doing a little bit of auditing of the website, seeing what we need to improve on, and also working on the accessibility factors, while looking at different options that we have to to make sure our website is accessible to all Clayton residents. And through this process, we'll be working a lot with Civic Plus to get all these pieces in motion and really getting everything good to go. All right, in phase two, we will be working on the content development officially. So this is slated to start in April and run through June of 2025. So for this one, we'll be working one on one with the departments, so that way we know exactly what they need and they want to make sure that Clayton residents have access to and can see easily. We'll also be working on streamlining the processes that we have, paring down as much as we can and really making the most of our website with as little clicks as possible. And we also want to try to modernize our pages. Design changes every day, so it can be hard to stay on top of that, so we want to try to make sure we stay ahead of the curve as much as possible. And then, of course, improving, as Nathaniel was mentioning, improving our modules, making sure we're really taking advantage of our Civic Plus platform and really getting those modules in use. All right, in phase three, we'll be in the dine and user design and user experience phase, or UX. This will start in July and projected to run until about September 2025. So in this phase, we'll be implementing everything that we've been working on building. So implementing the streamlined navigation and modernized layout, we'll be optimizing our accessibility, making sure everything is accessible and easy to read and easy to navigate, following the ADA compliance. And then we'll also be conducting some usability testing, but more minimal in this stage. Once we get to phase four, this is really when we're starting to get things up and going and really making sure things are working well. We'll be in the implementation and testing phase. So we'll be submitting updates and all of all of the things we need to transition over to claytonnc.gov. We also want to refine our search function, so when you first get into the main page, you have the search bar. We want to make sure that when people search in there, they actually go where they want to go. So we'll be working on a lot of key terms, so that'll be a lot of digging to go through all the pages and making sure all that's aligned to move forward. And then, of course, as Nathaniel had also mentioned, really going through and making sure, yes, it's accessible on desktop, but also applicable to mobile, since a huge majority of users tend to use mobile moving forward as we go forward. And then the final phase, the most exciting one, phase five, the website launch, is slated for approximately December of 2025. And we say beyond because this is a never ending thing. It'll just keep going. It's a cyclical process. So this will be the official transition to claytonnc.gov. And at this point, that's when we'll really monitor and see how things are going with the website, make sure we get the feedback that we have, and make updates as needed. And thankfully, Civic Plus has a really good analytics format that we can use to really track where users are going and how they're utilizing our website, so we can kind of tweak and move forward from there. All right, and I'll open the floor for any questions.
I'm going to struggle with going to claytonnc.gov. I'm going to go ahead and tell you that. I'm going to struggle with that, big time. I feel like the people who've had to change their address on Highway 70 and Highway 42 West, now we're going to have to contact everybody and their brother for 23 years to say, I need you to change my email address to mayor@claytonnc.gov. I'm not sure how that's going to work, but anyway, I just thought I'd give you a fair warning on that. Everything else looks great.
I'm impressed that you're tracking the usage and where the most usage is, and you're enhancing those areas, the mobile, for instance. I applaud this. This is great.
Yeah, I think the mobile is fantastic. Yeah. And we can't beat the price. Y'all negotiated a great deal for us on that.
Very well.
That's awesome. All right, anyone else? Thank you both.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Very much. All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone who wants to speak?
Well, I propose the last presentation. My name once again is John Scarp, at 1304 Neuse Ridge Drive, Clayton, North Carolina. It just showed the gentleman who made our last presentation that if you try to go to the claytonnc.org on your mobile phone, it comes up saying Clayton.org doesn't support a secure connection. Attackers can see and change information you send or receive. He was happy that I showed it to him and took a picture of it. So one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons why, Ms. Archer, I was unaware of the thing that you told me about, because that scared the heck out of me. And I didn't go there. But I did because I saw you here and you mentioned it, and I saw what you were referring to earlier. So once again, listen, I just want to say thank you to you all for what you what you do on an everyday basis and for your indulgence in letting me come and address you every time that I do. I know that I can be a little bit of a bad penny coming back, but my intentions are really heartfelt. They're good. Okay, so thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just add a comment to you? I want to just say, I wish we had more folks that came out to these meetings like you did, because it's how you are informed, it's how you really understand some of the decisions that are made and the background to some of the decisions we make. So I appreciate you being here at every council meeting, more than I can say. So thank you.
Well, it makes me feel really good. Thank you very much for saying that.
Anyone else? All right, if not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Casey, I may Mr. Mims late.
Thank you. I know I already talked, addressed this to staff, and it's on their radar, but it just seemed fitting tonight with the proposed project at the corner of Church and Front Street. I'd like to see some sort of stop streets, stop markings on this, on that road there. It just seems like that's a, that's a straight shot street, and people drive, you know, pretty much feels like unlimited speeds there, and they hit these stop signs, they sometimes don't even stop, and it's just kind of a dangerous, dangerous intersection. So if we could, you know, just maybe see what we can do about doing, just doing some markings. I know the stop signs are there. I mean, I'm seeing other communities where there's these white lines that, you know, kind of give somebody another visual way that says, hey, we need to stop. You know, these locations, I've seen several people, I know there's been some accidents in those locations, and we actually impacted, my wife almost got T-boned a few weeks ago. So anyway, if we could do that, I think that'd be fantastic.
So that item has been turned over to our Traffic Safety Committee. They meet quarterly. I believe they're not scheduled to meet again until March, but we'll follow up with them. I'll get Tim and Donald and the engineering staff to look at standard drawings that we put down.
Anything else? Okay. Anyone down there? Mr. Sims?
Thank you. Real quick, next Thursday, on the 27th, at 6:30, the Clayton Center, want to announce the Air Force Heritage Brass Band will be in the house. We would like a huge turnout. These airmen and airwomen are part of the Air Force. They're going to give a concert, and they are very, very grounded in patriotic spirit. They highlight doing just a diverse amount of different genres, from music scores to chamber music and so on and so forth. Outstanding way to honor not just the Air Force, but the military and all the veterans. So at the end of the day, it's going to be at February 27th, again, at 6:30 at the Clayton Center. And last but not least, please, please, ma'am, sir, pay attention for next Wednesday and Thursday for the storm. If you can, if you don't have to go out, please do not go out. Rest assured, our town manager and our teams here in Clayton will be out and about, making sure we can try to take care of the roads. Richard's team doing outstanding jobs. So if you don't have to go out those days, please do not.
I'm proud of you for highlighting an Air Force brass band concert as a former Marine.
We all in for the same cause.
Exactly. All right. Any other council comments? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before this council? Hearing done, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.